Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, that's correct. This is the Thursday 4:20 session of the Portland City Council. Only a few people got the joke.
I'm very relaxed.
We're here all night, folks. There are a few items that I need to read into the record, but first I'll ask Susan, could you call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Udeli.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. So this is our traditional statement. The purpose of council meetings is to do the city's business, including hearing from the community on issues of concern. In order for us to hear from everyone and to give due consideration to matters before the council, we must all endeavor to preserve the order and decorum of these meetings. To make sure that the process is clear for everyone, I want to review some of the basic guidelines, which I hope will help everybody feel comfortable, respected, and heard. We also obviously want to ensure that decorum is maintained. Today, there will be an opportunity for public participation. Depending upon how much time we have, and I presume we'll have enough time, people will traditionally be given three minutes unless we have to reduce that to ensure that everybody has a chance to speak. In front of your microphone, you'll see a couple of lights. The yellow one goes on when you have 30 seconds. The red one goes on when your time is up. We do ask you to state your name for the record. You don't need to give your specific address unless you want to do that. If you're a lobbyist, we ask you to disclose that. If you're part of an organization, it would also be helpful if you disclose that. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example shouting, or interrupting other people's testimony, or interrupting during council deliberations, will not be allowed. People who do disrupt the meeting face ejection. If there is a disruption, I'll issue a warning that if any further disruption occurs, anyone who's disrupting the meeting will be subject to ejection for the remainder of the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave the meeting after being ejected will be subject to arrest for trespass. In order to make sure that as many people as possible get a chance to speak, we ask that you not verbalize support or opposition. Please just give a thumbs up, or a thumbs down, or jazz hands, or whatever you'd like to do. But that just helps us move the meeting along. So without further ado, if I could ask the council clerk to read the first item, first and only item.
No, there's two.
Oh, that's right. First item, please.
Are we taking 382 first?
Yes. Let's take 382 first because I think we can do that relatively quickly.
382, change the salary grade for the nonrepresented classification of neighborhood involvement and programs director.
Very good. And I'm sorry, this, I should have told you two, we have some business that we didn't quite get to yesterday, but we'll be done with this forthwith. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. For the record, my name is Elizabeth Nunes. I'm the Classification and Compensation Manager in the Bureau of Human Resources, and I'm here to present the ordinance to change the nonrepresented salary grade for the Office of Neighborhood Involvement and Programs Director from a grade 14 to a grade 15. This process came about by, we received in our office, a request to review the classification, update the responsibilities of the position, and in doing so, compare the pay grade to see if it was still appropriate. In doing so, we found that it should be raised by one level, and we are here to request that now.
Very good. Any questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Fritz?
We all know that there's a classification comparison study that's underway.
Yes.
Why was the decision made to move forward with this one before the rest of them?
Because there is recruitment that just came up, and so because we have to do an immediate recruitment for that position, we wanted to make sure that we would be competitive in trying to attract someone with the requisite skills, quality, and background to take on that role.
Commissioner Udeli, could you give me an idea of when that position will be posted?
I can't give you an idea of that.
Because the reason I'm asking is that, and I've been asking for several of my directors and other budget offices to be upgraded. For instance, currently, there's a recruitment for the Metro Parks Director, and that position is in charge of 90 people and pays $10,000 more than the current City Parks Director, who manages over 2,000 people. And so other directors have been patiently waiting. I guess in addition, Commissioner Udeli, I'm concerned about doing this out of sequence because it then makes other inequities seem even more stark. For instance, the Portland Housing Bureau is Director is 15, and their budget is 10 times that of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement plus the bond measure. So is HR at all concerned about the effect on other classifications?
Well, we are committed, and we know that our citywide nonrep study is going to address any inequities that may or may not exist. So taking them as a whole, we know if, for instance, this change somehow makes the rest no longer imbalanced, we know they will be addressed.
And do we have a sense of when that's going to be finished?
We have a tentative final date, the end of September.
I'd like to add that we do plan on filling the position by July, and that we asked for the class comp study because a significant amount of duties have been added to the jobs, specifically regulatory duties around cannabis noise and liquor. The classification for the Director of Office of Equity and Human Rights was raised to 15. It's a relatively small office. I don't think it's unreasonable that after 16 years, we do a new class comp for the ONI Director.
Actually, the Office of Equity and Human Rights started at 15, and the incumbent is an attorney, so it was felt that that was necessary to get the right caliber. But I'm interested in your comment, Commissioner Udeli, is so it's your understanding that specifically cannabis noise and liquor will stay within the Office of Neighborhood Involvement?
I don't really think this is part of that conversation, but I don't have any plans to remove it at this point.
That's helpful, thank you.
And perhaps I can clarify, when we look at a classification to decide where it belongs, we can only look at what is there at the time that we review it. So if things are going to move out or other things move in, we don't consider that until that actually happens, and then we would relook at it.
And how much overlap is there between 14 and 15 grade levels? What's the scan, the span of how much bottom and top of 14 versus bottom and top of 15?
From top to top, I think it's about a 12% difference.
And what's the HR policy in terms of hiring people? Is it usual to put people at the top of the salary to start off with?
That it varies when it's an appointed position. It's up to the commissioners or directors, whoever's in charge of that.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to add one other thing. David Reese, Assistant HR Director. I know that Anna Canwit was interested in the information that you gave to her, Commissioner Fritz, and if there were other situations where we had an opening where there was a recruitment for a Bureau Director, and there was a communication from a commissioner to take a look at that in anticipation of that recruitment, that she would give them the same action that she gave Commissioner Udeli, that she would look at that opening for recruitment purposes in advance of the completion of the class comp study?
Well, it doesn't really give, it doesn't seem reasonable to me that we ask our current employees to stay below their pay grade before recruitment even has been out for this thing. But I did get that response from Anna Canwit, and I know she's out of the country right now. So would you not entertain a motion or a request to change classification before September on the one, on the people who are, the positions that are already filled?
Well, I think those are going to be looked at, in fact are being looked at by the class comp study, and that whole structure would be under review. What we've done now is we've taken a look at the current structure, looked at all the comparables internally, and seen what is, seen whether or not this current classification that was requested is more like the classifications in 15 than in 14, if those are the two eras. That structure could change even as a result of the class comp study, and so there may be more changes that would come as a result of that.
Can I jump in for a sec?
Commissioner Fish.
So the commissioner in charge is asking for a bump in classification in order to have more flexibility on compensation in the recruitment process, correct?
Correct.
And if the candidate, if there's a candidate that requires, in order to lure them to city service to get at the higher level, that's fully compensated out of the Bureau's budget, correct? The Bureau has to, obviously pays for the compensation cost.
I assume so, yes.
And is the, is it possible, because of the sequence here, doing this ahead of the class comp, is it possible today's decision will impact your recommendations to us in terms of other classifications, or is this wholly independent?
This is really independent of that. I mean, this classification is a part of the overall study, so it will be looked at in comparison to the others. But the other factor that we took into account in even considering changing this was the fact that it hasn't been looked at in a very long time, and a lot of responsibilities were added to the classification. So we didn't just look at what existed, we added and edited the classification itself. So we took on more duties, more responsibilities, since it was originally classified, however long ago that was.
Okay, thank you.
And this may be difficult, but based on what you just said in terms of it comes out of the Bureau's budget, do you know if that then has to go as an amendment to the city, to the Office of Neighborhood Involvement's budget to say where they're going to take that money?
I don't know that.
Yeah, I'll check on that. I mean, it's ironic that one of the other roles that set the level 14 is the City Budget Office, so I'll have to ask them to look into that. Thank you, I appreciate your answers.
Very good. Any further questions? Is there any public testimony on this item?
We had several people sign up yesterday. I don't believe they're here, but I could read their names.
Why don't you just, for the record, read their names, and if they're not here, they're not here.
Mimi Gurman, Cameron Stark, Joe Walsh, Star Stoffer, Charles Johnson, Teresa Rayford, Sanabe Hart, Shallow Franklin, and Steve Entwistle.
All right, those individuals here, not seeing them. This is a nonemergency first reading, it moves to second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 391. Amend ordinance that vacated a portion of southwest Madison Street between southwest 10th Avenue and southwest Park Avenue to replace and add new conditions and grant an easement to enable the Portland Art Museum to plan for a new Rothko Pavilion.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody who's come out today, this afternoon. This is an important item, and the potential action by City Council, and potential action by City Council, and it's great to see so many people in our community here. And first off, I want to make sure everyone is clear that this is a nonemergency ordinance, as you just heard. That would amend the street vacation on southwest Madison Street. In normal language, a nonemergency ordinance means we don't vote today, so it's never been intended that we take a vote today. This is simply the opportunity to hear from the public, to hear from the art museum about the proposal, and then we will vote on it at a later date. And that highlights an important second point also. The street section of southwest Madison was vacated by City Council in 1968 with the requirement that an eight-foot-wide pedestrian easement be maintained. Hence, it is only the City Council that can amend that requirement. When the Portland Art Museum approached me about bringing this ordinance forward, I made it clear to them that I thought there was going to, it would spark some controversy and concern, and does fly in the face of some pretty specific central city policies around connectivity and accessibility. They understood, and they made a compelling case that the concept strengthens important city, central city policies around cultural institutions and innovation. By considering, by connecting their two buildings more effectively and creating a more welcoming entrance into the museum, they feel that all visitors will benefit. So this is where we are today. I will quickly turn this over to my policy director, Matt Grum, who's been shepherding this ordinance through the system, and we have Caitlin Ref, who is Portland Bureau of Transportation's Capital Project Manager, who can help answer any technical questions from the council, as well as we have City Attorney and Land Use Rockstar Catherine Beaumont. So following Matt's comments and any questions from the council that the council may have at this time, I will invite representatives of the Portland Art Museum to come forward and provide us with a short presentation on their concept, what they refer to as the Rothko Pavilion, and then we'll open it up to general testimony. So Matt, take it away.
Just a quick question. Caitlin, is this your first appearance before council?
It is.
Well, we have a tradition of welcoming people at their first presentation, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Matt Grum.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, council. Great to be here, Matt Grum with Commissioner's Office. This is really neat. I hope you all enjoy this because this is really what City Council is all about. I'm hopeful that we'll hear some great testimony here today, and that's really key, as Commissioner Saltzman meant. We want to hear from the public about the Portland Art Museum's desire to further amend the easement on southwest Madison. Commissioner Saltzman explained this in his opening remarks, and if you'll allow me, I'd like to quickly expand on that a bit and get you around what we're thinking here and why we're here. When the museum approached Commissioner Saltzman about further constraining this easement, we were confronted with how best to have this conversation with the public. I mean, this is a big project for the museum, and as you know, well, building in the center of city, much less construction impacting a landmark, is a time-consuming and very public process. Therefore, we felt it was prudent to provide the museum some clarity on the specific issue of this easement before they went into that formal land use and design process. And that is important to remember today, that you, the council, are not designing this pavilion, and actually could have that issue in front of you in the future, depending on how the design and the landmarks commission process unfolds. Today is a focused look at the easement on southwest Madison, and the question of it, can it be further constrained by the museum's pavilion concept? So back when the museum approached the commissioner and his thinking on how best to have this conversation with the public, first off, Commissioner Saltzman was intrigued by the concept the museum presented, and we'll see that here in a minute, and felt the cleanest way to have this conversation was to create a nonemergency ordinance that would allow the museum to fulfill its pavilion concept, and that would be the starting point of this public conversation. Commissioner Saltzman also knew it was important to immediately inform some of the most engaged public around this, and fortunately, in February, the Bicycle Advisory Committee and the Pedestrian Advisor Committee were having a joint meeting. Commissioner Saltzman was able to quickly fill them in on the idea, and then when council would be here considering it, and actually as a follow-up to that, PBOT staff and the museum staff attended last week's Bicycle Advisory Committee and had further issues to discuss and talk about. All of this has now culminated in this hearing, and as I began with, hopefully some great input from the public. Finally, to quickly conclude this, and of course, answer any of your questions, I will hazard a guess what happens after today. You will all know that have some different ideas, questions, potential requests, and so I would anticipate that staff from all of your offices would join PBOT staff, the city attorney, and myself in addressing those, and ultimately deciding how we move forward. And obviously, that won't happen in less than one week, so we wouldn't bring this ordinance, or what I would expect could be an amended ordinance, back next week, but would look for an appropriate time within a month or so to come back for your further consideration. With that, I will shut up and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Not yet, I don't hear the panel. Okay, yeah, so I'd like to now invite up Executive Director and Chief Curator Brian Fariso, Director of Education and Public Programs, Mike Murawski, and Chief Advancement Officer J.S. May from the Portland Art Museum. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, Councilors Udeli, Fish, Fritz, Saltzman. I really appreciate your time this afternoon. I'm Brian Fariso, Director of the Portland Art Museum, and today I'm asking the council to approve an amendment to ensure the success of our proposed pavilion. 125 years ago, the founders of the Portland Art Museum recognized the importance of art and education for our burgeoning city and state. With our proposed pavilion and master plan, we are reaffirming our founder's vision in planning a very significant investment in our community's cultural life to ensure the museum and its vital mission thrive today as well as for the next 125 years and beyond. When I was appointed Director in 2006, I articulated three priorities for the museum. Firstly, art would be at the center of all of our activities. Secondly, we would provide access to all, regardless of economic means or cultural status. And thirdly, we would be accountable for dollars donated and be financially transparent in all of our transactions. As I reflect over the last decade, much has been achieved in fulfilling these priorities. Through exhibitions and programs, the museum has celebrated humankind's finest artistic achievements, from antiquity to the present, and from throughout the globe, bringing Oregon to the world and the world to Oregon. We have welcomed over 1 million visitors for free, or at a significantly reduced rates, through free admission for children 17 and under, free admission for veterans and their families, quarterly free family days, first free Thursdays, $5 Friday evenings, and $5 admission to all Oregon Trail cardholders. Strong financial stewardship and transparency have earned us the trust and respect of our community, evidenced by the private support that provides the major portion of our annual budget of nearly $17 million a year. In all, since 2006, the museum has welcomed over 3 million visitors of diverse backgrounds and incomes, truly becoming the museum a resource for all and not an attraction for a few. The museum campus is composed of the main building and Mark buildings. Designed by celebrated architect Pietro Beluschi in 1932, with subsequent additions in 1939 and 1970, the main building houses galleries for the collections, exhibitions, and an auditorium. The renovated Masonic Temple became the Mark Building in 2005, and includes galleries for modern contemporary art, event spaces, and offices. Visitors currently access the Jupiter Center for Modern and Contemporary Art in the Mark Building via an underground passageway from the main building. Unfortunately, because of the concealed nature of this passageway, only half of our visitors are able to find the center, which houses iconic works by Monet, Van Gogh, Picasso, Brancusi, and Graves, among others. The proposed pavilion will offer visitors a greatly enhanced experience by creating connections across four levels, and by bringing visitors deeper in to the historic Mark Building. A new modern and contemporary gallery will be added, the library will be made more accessible, and access to visitor amenities will be enhanced. The pavilion will be named in honor of Mark Rothko, one of the most influential painters of the 20th century who grew up in Portland. The gift that enabled the pavilion to be named after this world-renowned artist also allowed the museum to secure a long-term loan agreement of masterworks by Mark Rothko on a rotating basis. This association is transformational for the museum, the city, and the state, and it has already garnered national, international, and regional attention. The pavilion, which is an extension of our free access initiative- The pavilion, which is an extension of our free access initiatives, is designed to add space for art and education, enhance the viewer, viewing experience, and create a welcoming, free public space. Its design is efficient and elegant without unnecessary extravagance. The board and staff and donors to date believe the proposed design, unlike others we have explored, is a perfect solution and is critical to our ability to meet the needs of our growing, evolving, diversifying audiences that consistently exceed over three hundred and fifty thousand people a year. The view from Park Avenue shows the artistic use of glass in the design, allowing the structure to serve as a visual invitation to the community to access many of our offerings. It will be open for museum visitors and pedestrian traffic during all business hours, including Mondays. The view from Tenth Avenue shows a new entry from the west and those disembarking on the streetcar and an improved courtyard for art and outdoor sculpture. Because the pavilion connects the two buildings, it is not possible to have an open walkway running west to east along the side of the Mark Building as it now exists. The entire space must be enclosed, secured, and temperature-regulated to protect the art. We also recognize there is some concern about enclosing Madison Street between Park and Tenth Avenues, but we truly believe the benefit of this grand, free public space of over five thousand square feet benefits the community in a deep and meaningful way. We are very grateful to our neighbors and community partners who have expressed their support. Ultimately, the Portland Art Museum's celebrated collections, programs, and staff reveal the beauty and complexities of our world and create a deeper understanding of our shared humanity. We seek to be a museum for all, inviting everyone to connect with art through their own experiences, voices, and personal journeys. The proposed Mark Rothko Pavilion is an essential part of our ambitions to welcome all Oregonians, and I am hopeful that you will look favorably upon our desired ordinance modification. Thank you very much. It now gives me a great pleasure to introduce Director of Exhibition, excuse me, Education and Public Programs, our leader, Mike Morosky. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and the engaged citizens and friends that have joined us here this afternoon. And for the record, Mike Morosky, Director of Education at the Portland Art Museum. I am proud to speak about the growing education and community impact of the Portland Art Museum here on our own city and region, and how this proposed expansion and the public space included within that expansion would enhance and expand these efforts, as well as bring our community into the very core of our museum campus. Each year, approximately sixty thousand adults, families, and children attend more than a hundred and fifty educational programs offered by the museum. These range from artist talks and lectures to family art-making, public drawing festivals, jazz concerts, and special programs reaching underserved audiences. Each year, more than thirty thousand students visit the Portland Art Museum through field trips and school programs, connecting with our collections as well as engaging special exhibitions, like the current Constructing Identity, which includes work by more than eighty African-American artists. Each year, more than six hundred teachers and educators participate in professional development at the museum. We just had over a hundred on Tuesday. Through these programs, we're not only serving art teachers, but we're reaching those teaching language arts, social studies, math, and science as well. Each year, the museum works with more than four hundred and fifty schools and community organizations across our region. More than a third of these are located in neighborhoods with a household income below forty thousand. It is these school and community partnerships that we've prioritized since I became Director of Education nearly five years ago, and I'd like to highlight just a few of those examples of partnerships. Our work with schools, teachers, and families is so much more than the numbers. Last Wednesday, for example, through a growing partnership with Portland Public Schools, the museum hosted for the second year in a row the Heart of Portland Celebration of Arts Education and the Arts Tax. As a PPS parent myself, I was proud to be there and shine a spotlight on more than four hundred and eighty student artists, musicians, and performers, ranging from kindergarten to high school seniors. And I want to thank all the citizens of Portland for their support of the Arts Tax, which is making all of this possible. And the image that we see here, this is Ms. Robinson's first-grade class, music class from Boise Elliott, alongside Naseen Kent, a second grader at Vernon Elementary, proudly standing by his work that's on view in the student art exhibit, which is on view at the Portland Art Museum until Saturday. It includes a work of art from every school in Portland Public Schools. This event and student art showcase all occurred within our Mark Building. We imagine all of this happening in the proposed pavilion, right in the heart of our city's art museum. Hundreds of young artists and their families, their community, gather to celebrate the creativity of our city, clearly and proudly visible to everyone walking by and walking through, and expanded student art showcase on display in a public space like the Community Commons, where everyone can connect with the next generation of artists and creative thinkers. Connecting on a more global scale, the Portland Art Museum is now entering its third year of a partnership with Portland State University and its Middle East Partnership Initiative, or MEPI program. This competitive program of the U.S. Department of State invites leaders from countries across the Middle East and North Africa to develop leadership skills and expand their understanding of democracy while visiting the United States. While at the museum, students explore issues of artistic expression and cultural identity through art on view in the galleries, and they're able to bring their experiences here in Portland back with them as they implement cultural and civic engagement programs in their home countries. We're also entering our fourth year of a partnership with Adelante Mujeres, an incredible organization dedicated to educating and empowering Latino women. The museum works with participants in their Chicas Youth Development Program, focusing on cultural identity and academic success. And as we expand our work with Latino communities across the Portland region, we envision the proposed pavilion being a central way to publicly celebrate Portland's cultural diversity in broader and more meaningful ways. From these smaller, more intimate partnerships to engaging much larger audiences, the Portland Art Museum is committed to being a hub for arts and culture here in the city. This has been so wonderfully achieved through our partnership with Literary Arts, hosting the citywide literary festival Wordstock. Through onstage events, workshops, book fairs, children's activities at last year's festival, the museum welcomed seven thousand peoples through its doors on a single day. Instead of book enthusiasts and their families scrambling between buildings, galleries, event spaces, underground tunnels, the proposed pavilion would transform our museum's ability to increasingly be a hub for these citywide cultural events, bringing communities together around the arts in an open and connected way. The Portland Art Museum strives to be a museum for all, as Brian mentioned, inviting everyone to connect to art through their own experiences and voices. A new partnership with the Museum of Impact has opened up new conversations and relationships with organizations here in Portland focusing on equity, inclusion, creative expression, and community building. These partnerships expand the museum's role around some of the social issues facing residents here in our own city. We're envisioning the ways the new public community commons space and education spaces within the proposed pavilion can serve community needs and bring diverse voices into the center of our city's art museum. And finally, on a more intimate note, the museum is now in its third year of a close partnership with the Alzheimer's Association, offering programs to people living with dementia and their care partners. Called Art Now, this program powerfully connects people to people, using art as a catalyst to change people's lives. This picture is Bernie and Mark. I love them. A recent participant of this program told us that a single visit to the art museum made a bigger difference for them than months and months of expensive experimental treatments. We're constantly hearing these stories in which the museum is helping make this city a better place to live. Community involvement and engagement is core to the museum's proposed expansion and pavilion, and next week during Design Week Portland, the museum is beginning a series of community conversations to help envision the potential of this community commons space and pavilion and ensure that we're focusing on removing barriers and thinking broadly about ideas of connection, participation, and community involvement. So in closing, after being involved with the museum for the past five years, I'm so proud of the work we're now doing to become an essential part of our community and to have our community see themselves as an essential part of this museum and its future. Thank you so much for your time, and I would like to introduce our Chief Advancement Officer, J.S. May.
Thank you, Mike. J.S. May, Chief Advancement Officer, Portland Art Museum. As you can see from this slide looking towards the Mark Building and from this side, looking back towards the main building, leaving an eight-to-ten-foot open-air easement between the buildings would result in a pavilion that doesn't solve the problems of connectivity between our two buildings that it is designed to address. And designing in gates or some other type of barrier would create security issues that would detract from the goal to create one of Portland's grand public spaces and the museum's main entrance. And finally, we've been asked how we will let people know this is a public space. First, through its name, the Community Commons, and through signage, communications, and programming. Just as we do now with our current access programs, we actively work to have people sample the museum, and approximately a hundred thousand people do so already through our admissions access programs. The Rothko Pavilion will simply enhance our ability to make the Portland Art Museum be everyone's museum. So do you have questions for us?
I have a couple. Thank you for your presentation. J.S., could you remind us what all of the public processes you have, you're required to go through as part of this? So you're here on an easement.
We're here on an easement, and then we will have the landmarks process on the actual design itself. That's where the design review process occurs.
Okay, and do you have any issues that come up under the comp plan?
I don't think so.
Okay, so it's primarily landmarks, design, and easement. Are those the?
Yes.
And, and, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz?
My understanding is that bicycles will not be allowed to go through here. Is that the proposal?
That's correct.
And why is that?
Because there will be doors that are airlock quality because of the need to protect the art and the flow of air within the building.
And I also understand that no, no animals other than service animals.
Correct.
So actually, there is some testimony in the record about the comprehensive plan, in particular the West Quadrant Plan and our street connectivity requirements. Would you care to address those?
I don't know the details deeply on those, so I'm, I'm not the person to address that.
Okay, and my understanding is the Planning and Sustainability Commission has not yet held a hearing on this. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct, and, and the Planning and Sustainability Commission would hear a hearing if this were a street vacation, but as I, as I indicated, this was, street was vacated in 1968. So this is simply a modification of that.
I believe we do have a-
So I don't believe it needs to go to the Planning and Sustainability Commission.
Well, we have a request from them to be able to weigh in, particularly since the Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Oregon Walks, and the Portland Commission on Disability are all asking not to approve this. So would, would you care to address any of those concerns?
There are definitely people who will be inconvenienced by the pavilion in the hours that it's closed. We can't deny that. The pavilion will be built to all ADA-accessible requirements so that people, when the building is open, they will be able to walk through the, the building. The fundamental question here, I think, is for the city council to consider, is, is the greater good of the city served by the pavilion being a destination for people and a public space, or is that not the case? So I think that is the crux of the issue that is before you as a, as a group.
Well, there is a public space there now, which is really lovely, so the question is-
Yes, and there will be an eight-foot easement within the building as part of this also.
And what hours are you proposing that easement to be open for?
At this point, we're looking at museum hours, which would be ten to five Monday through, or Sunday through Wednesday, ten to eight Friday and Saturday, I mean, Thursday and Friday.
So much less than the current easement allows public right-of-way?
Yeah. Currently, the easement, we have the ability to close the, the walkway from eleven PM to seven AM.
So colleagues, one of my concerns is particularly about bicycles, that this area is being north of Jefferson, that cyclists are supposed to be on the sidewalk. If they're on the, on the street, they can ride their bikes, but they're not allowed to ride their bikes on the sidewalk. So that's quite a, if you're concerned about, if people are concerned about going east-west on the adjacent streets, they wouldn't be able to walk their bicycle through the pavilion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And by my calculation, the distance from the streetcar stop to the Historical Society or, let's say, Schnitzer Hall, just for example, is the exact same on the streets adjacent to the museum. It's the same amount of steps.
Commissioner Fish?
J.S., I want to go back to the, another way of looking at this. By the way, you're going to stick around so that after the testimony, if we have questions about things we've heard, alternatives, we can come back.
Yes, I think Brian has to go to a meeting, but I'll stay here throughout.
Okay.
Happy to stay if you think it's appropriate.
I think you have a good team. So, so my perspective on this museum, which I consider to be a jewel, is that your current entrance is a mess.
Yes.
And, and it presents several problems. First is, I'm not sure it's very accessible, and I want you to address that. I want to find out what, I'll come back to that. Number two, once you come in, it's a crowded space where you kind of snake around to get a ticket. And number three, in order to gain access to the, to your newest collection of modern art, you actually have to go downstairs and then figure out your way up. And so there's, there's tremendous barriers. So put aside the question of, you know, whether this pavilion's the right eye, the best possible option in the easement. Talk to us for a moment about what the enhanced customer experience is through this, this new pavilion versus your, your existing entrance.
Well, currently, the entrance at the Beluschi Building, the 1932 building, is completely inaccessible. There are historic stairs there that, and gates which were, which date back to the original building. So the only accessible entrance that we have is coming through the, through the courtyard and then through a ramp which comes up between the, the stairs leading up to the Hoffman Wing door and the space that we affectionately refer to as the cage. So there is a single walkway up through there. So that's really the only accessible entrance into the museum proper itself. This, the new facility will be accessible from both Park and Tenth and, and be really easy for people to figure out how to get in. In terms of customer experience, you will come into this, right now, one of the real challenges of our building is that you can never find the stairs. All of the stairwells are hidden. Our proposal actually moves the loading dock from the, its current location over to southwest Jefferson, and the existing loading dock, which is also in the courtyard, becomes a four-story stair tower. So when you come into the main building, you'll actually see the stairs, so you'll understand both vertical and axial transportation throughout the building. So it'll be a dramatic improvement for, for visitors as they're trying to figure out how to get around the building.
And I'll add one other thing. You know, Pietro Beluschi designed a masterpiece for us in 1932, and that design is very much based on an axial architecture. You can see long vistas through the galleries. It's a very rational, clear indicator when you enter the museum of how to go from space to space. It's considerably disrupted when we added the Mark Building through the underground passageway. What the architects are trying to do now is build off the greatness of what Beluschi designed and create an axial experience for our visitors, and in many ways, giving them a sense of comfort and ease as they're in the museum, as they walk through and can see where they are, rather than a cacophony of spaces, spaces that causes a lot of angst.
What is, if you get the green light for this vision, what happens to the sculptures that are currently in the sculpture garden?
Right. So the sculptures in the sculpture garden will be added to the various plazas outdoors where they are now. So the new design has two plazas, an East Plaza and a West Plaza. In those plazas will be sculptures.
And then you can basically think about the Madison Street vacation in thirds in terms of the museum experience. A third will be building, a third in the back will be the Tenth Street Courtyard, and a third in the front will be the Park Avenue Courtyard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Public testimony?
We have twenty-nine signed up. I'll call three at a time, if you'll please come up when your name is called. Marcia Hocker, Arv Smith, Tom Nielsen, and they'll be followed by Wendy Rahm, Doug Klotz, and Judith Marks.
I knew you looked familiar, Mrs. Hocker.
Point of privilege, Marcia Hocker is the beloved spouse of George Hocker, who served the city of Portland with great distinction. She is also the voice of KMHD Radio, and most important- And most importantly, she is one of the early Miss New York Subways, which was a great honor in its day.
So, we had 29 people signed up. Now, we only have seven. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Marcia Hawker, and in addition to being a vocalist, an arts advocate, and radio host here in Portland, I am a member of an education chair for the PDx Jazz Board of Directors. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify on behalf of the Portland Art Museum. I've had the pleasure of working with the education and public programs team at the museum and have experienced firsthand the powerful effect that great art and great community partnerships can have. The museum's current exhibition, Constructing Identity, featuring African-American art, is a fine example of how art sparks conversations and celebrations. Through these authentic connections and true partnerships, the museum is welcoming an increase of visitors, including thousands of schoolchildren, in a truly meaningful way. Exhibitions like this and the resources they provide to teachers allow kids to see themselves reflected, to experience different perspectives, and appreciate their differences. I have attended family free days, lectures, and music events that are overflowing with people. Imagine what more the museum can do with added space and facilities to accommodate visitors of all ages and abilities, and how many more partnerships would be possible. I understand that our Portland Art Museum is nationally renowned for including community voices in many aspects of their work. I've seen evidence of this in a big way, and I hope that you will consider a vote in favor of this proposal that will expand community access, engagement, and diffusion of knowledge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you come read all the testimony here for now?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, City Commissioners. My name is Arvy Smith, and I'm an artist educator. I've lived here for a little more than 40 years, and I taught at Pacific Northwest College of Art for over 30 years. And I'm glad to be here today to support the Portland Art Museum and their expansion project. Brian and Mike earlier spoke about the power, powerful means of exposing our humanity, the power that art has in exposing our humanity. Art requires us to see from another person's perspective and confront our differences and similarities. I have been honored to have my work shown in the Portland Art Museum, and as a Northwest-based artist, I appreciate their commitment to collecting and presenting Northwest art. With my work, I try to combat racial stereotyping, which is never benign, and tend to exaggerate negative generalizations. Over the past year, I've had the opportunity to connect even more closely with the museum. I had an exhibition of paintings depicting lynchings of black people, police violence, and images of black negative stereotyping by the media. Portland is a very white city, and museums can be seen as places of white privilege. But the Portland Art Museum embraces the opportunity to invite people of all colors to engage in conversation about race, history, and current events. I gave free gallery talks and lectures, participated on panel discussions, and spoke at partner events in the courtyard. Museums are changing to reflect their communities and the world around them, and the Portland Art Museum is doing this in an inclusive and authentic way. While the proposal before you today is about glass, concrete, and steel, the impact will be warm, welcoming, will be a warm, welcoming place for our community to gather and create shared experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, my name is Tom Nielsen. I am a patron-level supporter of the art museum. I think the concept of the Rothko Pavilion is exciting because it helps address many of the connector issues between the two museum buildings. I also know that, for many reasons I trust you will hear about, maintaining the current public easement across the Madison Plaza is also very important. The public easement reinforces the pedestrian-friendly, interconnected, livable city that the city's planning processes have worked so hard to reinforce. I believe there must be a design solution that would allow an eight-foot-wide public passageway to stay open across the plaza while solving the identified connector issues between the museum buildings. A group of us met with museum executives over a year ago, on April 3rd, when we were first shown the Chicago architects' design for the pavilion. At that time, and on numerous occasions since then, I and others have reinforced our support for the project conceptually, but the request for them to go back and develop an alternative design that would allow the continuing public easement across the plaza. Our requests have never been taken seriously. The design has never been altered, and I think the museum has felt they could just push their way through the city's planning processes. I ask that the city council reinforce with the museum the importance of the current easement and suggest that they pursue an alternative design that accomplishes what they need while maintaining the public passageway. Then, instead of having a room full of citizens who are objecting to the project, they could have a room full of enthusiastic supporters promoting the project. The museum is not listening to citizens. Hopefully, they will listen to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next three, please. Wendy Rahm, Doug Klotz, Judith Marks. And they will be followed by Robert Wright, Mary Vogel for Oregon Walks, Philip Hilaire.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do you want to talk a second?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Wendy Rahm. I'm an art museum supporter and patron donor, and served several years on a council board there. I believe in the value and importance of arts in our city. However, I cannot support the Rothko Pavilion proposal and believe no change in the existing ordinance is necessary. Within existing ordinance conditions, the museum can build on the second, third, and fourth floors and achieve its building connections and programming goals. This would leave Madison Plaza largely as-is, a gathering point, an oasis in our neighborhood. This would allow the continuation of unenclosed, barrier-free, local connectivity that is easy transit for those with disabilities, those with dogs, both service and companions, cyclists walking their bikes through the passage, and pedestrians of all kinds, including moms with prams. Madison Plaza connects the South Park Block's cultural entertainment district with the dense West End neighborhood and the 10th and 11th Avenue streetcar stops at the museum. The plaza is a critical part of a larger pedestrian system. The museum proposal to both close and enclose the plaza would create a super block and a physical and psychological barrier. There is a ring of elitism to it. A person getting off the northbound streetcar at the museum can now walk six blocks straight to City Hall. If the passage were closed, that same trip becomes eight blocks, all with traffic, which could mean a person with disabilities just might not go. There is an alternative. A museum skybridge is not a new idea. It has been used in museums in Wisconsin and the Netherlands. There is nothing in city code that bans skybridges. The design guidelines recommend, recommends against them in an effort to increase pedestrian traffic. The irony here is that the museum design will decrease pedestrian traffic, not a goal in the 2035 plan for this area. You have a traffic study for those hours when the museum will be closed. One example is a Wednesday in May last year. During hours when the museum was closed, there were 677 pedestrians, including 10 with disabilities. Connectivity, barrier-free and open passage for all, a cultural and neighborhood iconic oasis accommodating those with disabilities are just some of the reasons to save this plaza. Please oppose any changes to existing ordinances and ask the museum to revise the proposal to accommodate existing conditions. Everyone can be a winner here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Judith Biberly Marks, and I live across from the art museum. I'm a member of the Portland Art Museum and the Film Center and frequently attend various area theaters. The reason I chose to live there is because I enjoy the cultural events nearby. I also chose it because I have COPD and can walk to so many of these things. I cannot stress enough how important the Madison Walkway is to my life and independence. If it were closed for most of the morning and evening, it would have literally breathtaking consequences for me. The additional blocks around the museum may be an inconvenience to others, but could prohibit some outings for me. Enough about my health. My training as a planner affects my world and neighborhood views. With open spaces disappearing around town, I feel it's important to save the precious plot next to the museum. I see the Madison Walkway from my window. To borrow from Dr. Seuss, oh, the sights that I see. Commuters rushing to jobs, perhaps in this very building. Backpack students heading to St. Mary's or PSU, parents pushing strollers towards Safeway, workers heading to alfresco lunches on the park blocks. Later, a steady stream to and from streetcars in other parts of the area. The commuters rushing, then commuters rushing back home. They all contribute to the area's rich life. They also serve a more important function. Urban planner Jane Jacobs wrote, "Eyes on the street make for safer neighborhoods." I worry that closing the block between 10th and Park can change travel patterns, leaving the area less peopled during the morning and evening. That will make it more inviting to those who operate in the quiet shadows. Please encourage the museum to come up with a design that will keep Madison Walkway open and well-lit by voting against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Doug Klotz. I'm a co-founder of Oregon Walks. I've been a 25-year member of the pedestrian, city's pedestrian advisory committee.
Thank you.
I'm just speaking for myself, but I do support their position. I urge you to reject this amendment to the vacation ordinance. Since 1968, the public's been allowed to walk through this passage, originally 24 hours, and then cut back to 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. In 2011, the Elliott Tower across the street also built a public passageway between 10th and 11th. So, it now becomes a longer connection, the art museum being here and the Elliott connection being there. So, it's a whole, several-block passage, and I sort of indicate routes that you can take from there. The Elliott passageway is like that. And you can see the art museum in the background. Wait a minute. That's the other way. That way. There's the art museum.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, so that's that. And this building, a building across the plaza, it's going to look like it's a private thing. I know, I don't know how many people know, there is another building in downtown Portland that you're allowed to walk by public easement, clear through this, open in the glass doors, out in one, through and out the other side. But no one would ever know that. There's no signs. It doesn't look public. That's the US Bank Tower. It was the vacation of Ankeny Street, but you'd never know it. So, it just doesn't work that way. And I think the art museum should go back to the drawing board, and there are precedents. People have been mentioning them. This is the Chazen Art Museum in Madison, Wisconsin. So, you, it's, you know, they have an open public plaza through there. They have a connection at the, at the upper level. I think they may have one below, too. The art museum could, as was noted before, connect not just the second level, but the third and fourth. And they could connect at the ground level. I don't know how many museums where they give you a little button to put on your shirt, and you could walk out a door, go over and walk in the other door. I don't understand why the current, modern art section doesn't have a door opening onto that plaza, so you could just go across the grade level and go in the door. And with this plan, they're going to have two entrances that are going to have to have security at anyway. This would be two entrances this way, same number of security people. So, I think they should, our museum should go back to the drawing board and look at ways to build this that I still think could be just as, as, as good a space, maybe a better space, that was still allowed, passage through there, you know, hopefully 24 hours, but at least seven to 11. That would feel more open and, you know, be a better connection for the city, as well as for them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Doug, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did you have any conversations about the possibility of expanding the public hours to match what's currently allowed?
I didn't have any conversations about that.
Okay.
But, but I still am concerned with the look of it. It was still looking closed.
I understand. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next three. Robert Wright, Mary Vogel for Oregon Walks, Philip Hilaire. They'll be followed by Shirley Rattner, Mary Vogel speaking for herself, and Cynthia Huntington.
Good afternoon. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Robert Wright. I've been a resident in the West End for 11 years, but I'm a Portland native also. The proposed Mark Rothko Pavilion is beautiful, but its current ground floor design apparently necessitates modification of the longstanding pedestrian passage easement that once was public property, Southwest Madison Street. A similar easement for the public benefit of pedestrians also exists from the plaza next to the condominium building where I live across the street. This placel, this plaza, was also once part of Southwest Madison Street. The front entrances of ground-level residential units open directly onto this plaza. In the 11 years I have lived in the condominium, residents of these units have had to suffer all manner of activities, some life-threatening, resulting in 911 emergency calls. Over the years, there have been suggestions to gate off the plaza from evening through early morning for the protection of these residents. The suggestions have been summarily dismissed for the greater good of the neighborhood, especially since pedestrian passage through this plaza aligns with the pedestrian passage between the two main buildings of the Portland Art Museum, heading to the South Park Blocks and adjacent venues. The reasons for dismissing such suggestions will change if the Portland Art Museum's easement amendment request is approved. The fundamental reasons for requiring pedestrian passes through both properties still exist today, as they did over 50 years ago, as an important part of city planning. Preventing pedestrian passage outside of the museum's open hours will set a legal precedent that can be applied to the condominium's plaza not only for security of art, but for the security of people. The need to maintain pedestrian passage through the condominium's plaza when the museum is closed would be greatly diminished. This precedent can also be applied to other pedestrian easements that are inconvenient to property development plans. For the greater good of neighborhood pedestrians and visitors, I strongly recommend that the easement for the Portland Art Museum property not be amended. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Mary Vogel, and I do want to make sure that I will be able to testify as myself, not just for Oregon Walks.
Understood.
Okay. Okay. Oregon Walks appreciates the opportunity to provide comments on the Portland Art Museum Madison Plaza easement request.
Could you all for a second?
What?
Would you gentlemen turn off your mics for a second?
Oh, good. Yeah. Turn that off.
Just a button.
Yeah.
Let's try that again.
Okay. I'm Mary Vogel from the Plans and Projects Committee. We are the state's pedestrian advocacy organization, and we work to ensure that walking is convenient, safe, and accessible for everyone. Oregon Walks opposes the PAM request as we believe...
Oregon Walks opposes the PAM request as we believe that it would make the city less convenient, safe, and accessible to pedestrians and others using active modes of transportation such as cyclists. Instead, we suggest a revision to the design that could accommodate both sides. We believe that we need more, not less, such plazas where pedestrians and slow-moving cyclists are protected from fast-moving vehicles. We believe our central city needs fewer, not more, superblocks. Superblocks are more than an inconvenience for people with disabilities, as you heard earlier from Judith. The extra steps they require sometimes mean that someone with a cane or walker does not go at all. A number of us at Oregon Walks, including myself, have worked hard to see that the Central City 2035 Plan will make our city more walkable and bikeable. We feel that this proposal by PAM would be taking us backwards, negating our work. Madison Plaza was a public street and a condition of the street vacation was to maintain pedestrian bicycle access. We recommend no changes to the existing ordinance. Rather, we suggest that you require a revision to the museum's proposed design to accommodate the ordinance. Redesign, not retreat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just, can we try something, because there's a lot of feedback? Is it possible it's interfering with the laptop? Why don't we close the laptop anyway? We're getting some interference and just, just so we can clearly hear everybody. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Is it on? Can't tell if it's on. Oh, there it is. Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and City Commissioners. My name is Philip Hilaire. I'm enrolled member of the Lummi Nation. I've worked and lived in Portland for 32 years. I'm also on the Native American Advisory Board for the Portland Art Museum and also the vice chair of the Regional Arts and Cultural Council. On behalf of the Native American community, I'm here today to testify in support of the Portland Art Museum's new expansion. The new pavilion will, the new pavilion will provide, will bring the two existing museum buildings together and add a much-needed space for artistic and cultural programming for current and future generations. The Native American community is very grateful for all the outstanding work that PAM has done for our community in the recent years. Exhibitions like the Contemporary Native Photographers, Contemporary Native Photographers and the Edward Curtis Legacy Exhibit, as well as the Native Fashion Now. And in addition, the creation, in addition, the creation of the Center of Contemporary Native Art. And the art, and the, I'm sorry, and the display of the Kosailish woven robes. These exhibitions have helped educate tens of, tens of thousands of visitors about Native Americans to inform and in a positive way. PAM has also, PAM has also recently, recently created the Native Advisory Board, which I'm a part of. We are there to assist the curators for future Native American exhibitions and collections. This collaborative work with PAM has proven that we, the Native American community, is a part of PAM's future, their commitment to showcase and to educate and to highlight, highlight Native American arts, history, and culture. Please support PAM on their new expansion of the pavilion so that all Portland citizens and visitors will be able to enjoy this extraordinary place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three, please. Shirley Rattner, Mary Vogel, Cynthia Huntington. They will be followed by Bruce Kaplan, Paula Lefche, Susan Bliss.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Good morning. Hello.
Hello.
I guess you can tell I'm nervous.
That's all right. Don't be nervous.
Can you turn the microphone off a little bit?
Is it, is the light on? Yeah, a green light should be on. There you go.
My, my name's Cynthia Huntington.
Cynthia, I'm sorry. Susan, can you help make sure that's on? Thank you. Sorry, we have new mics, so it's all a little confusing. Thank you.
All right. My name is Cynthia Huntington, 1500 Southwest Park Avenue. I'm speaking against the design only as it's currently presented. The new pavilion could be a win-win if the glass lobby retains an open air walk through on the ground level and only spans the entire street at the upper level. The museum would have all the benefits, the public wouldn't get locked out, faced with a superblock in a city that prides itself on being walkable. This city street was leased to the museum for as long as they provide a public access way. A glass structure enclosing that street does not say, "Welcome, please feel free to walk through." It very clearly says, "Keep out unless you pay." Of course, when the museum is closed, the street end can't even pretend to be open. This is an elitist obstruction. The privileged class will gain museum space and convenience at the cost of limiting others their own enjoyment of beauty and convenience. So how does this fit with Portland's proclaimed self-image? This design shows a lack of imagination, empathy, and responsibility towards all Portland residents and visitors. These shortcomings are jointly held by the architects and the Oversight Committee. So I ask the city council to do what's required, stand up for all residents, and address this disconnect. The new building doesn't need to be as proposed. I ask that the museum gets to proceed with this project only if they include an open walkway on the ground floor. So please represent all of us. Please do your part to truly make it a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Vogel from downtown, actually, sorry. I'm Mary Vogel from downtown's West End. On Monday, as I was trying to gain the support of my fellow Land Use and Transportation Committee members on my initiative to fix the only superblock in back of the Art Museum between Southwest 11th and 12th with a walkway, the discussion moved quickly to PAM's request to close Madison Plaza. As a cyclist in that female-over-50 category that planners are hard-pressed to attract to cycling, I mentioned how incredibly important the Madison Plaza route was to me. It's my safest and easiest path, both to the Hawthorne Bridge to access the East Side and also to Southwest Park Avenue to get to PSU and points beyond like National University of Natural Medicine. "That sounds pretty nimby," declared another Lut member from the new Park Avenue West. He tried to convince me that he should be able to have a world-class museum in Portland so that he wouldn't have to travel to Seattle or San Francisco for one. Most artists in Portland can't afford to use the Portland Art Museum now. I'm not the only one who wants a safe, car-free plaza to travel downtown. For one example, the community cycling center uses the two plazas to train low-income people in their Bike Town for All program. And hundreds of cyclists per week take those plazas to access Madison Street to the Hawthorne Bridge. As I was biking home from the East Side last night, I had the premonition that you were to set, that if you were to set precedent with this closure, then Portland V would not be far behind in seeking permanent closure on Southwest Main, obstructing the safest East Side bicycle route from the West End, both coming and going. Although I'm officially speaking only for myself, I represent hundreds of cyclists and potential cyclists, including likely 200 more cyclists moving to the neighborhood when Sky 3 opens next month. In an era of climate change and dwindling funds to repair the damage cars due to roads, we are a public benefit, too. Don't retreat on Madison Plaza, rather resist on, rather insist on redesign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Commissioner Fish.
Marion, thank you for your written testimony, because you brought back a memory.
Yeah.
A number of years ago, there was an informal discussion about a possibility of closing Southwest Main Street.
Yes.
And we know that it, from Broadway to 405, it terminates at 405, so it doesn't, it's actually, it's a dead end and then you have to, and someone, and I forget whom, you probably remember, but someone had proposed that we close it to cars and we turn it into a pedestrian plaza, add art and make it the new spine, the new east-west corridor in a cultural district. I'm not, I'm not here advocating that. I just remember when that was once suggested and it could, it could have had an impact on frankly where the entrances are of certain cultural institutions that are, if that was a pedestrian way, open to bikes and people but not cars, would that change your thinking about this issue?
Um.
Would it influence, would it have an impact on your thinking?
It would certainly have an impact on my thinking as long as, in fact, bicyclists were allowed, because, I mean, pedestrians have it much easier than bicyclists, okay, with our one-way roads.
You know, I live downtown now, so I walk.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And what I've learned is that that, that street is, Main is blocked off a lot.
Yeah.
That the barrier comes down, I don't know what triggers a closing, but it's closed a lot.
Yeah.
And I know someone has at one point proposed turning that into a pedestrian and bikeway.
Yeah.
I don't know what its impact would be on traffic. Dan is probably sitting here ready to throttle me, but it's, it was an idea I think the community was advancing at some point, and I don't know whether it's gonna come back to us.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I don't know either. I guess, I mean, you know, I just felt last night as I was going through there that, oh my gosh, this is, you know, gonna be closed with a building like the Portland, well, they didn't used to be called Portland V, but what they proposed back then was to put a building that would actually close the street, you know, across connecting the two buildings, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. But thank you, that, I mean, I think that's a great idea and, yeah, would, you know, certainly, I guess I would like to consult with the rest of the bicycling community before I would say, oh, it totally changes my thinking, but.
Good afternoon.
I'm Shirley Rattner. I'm, I'm here to urge the commission to look at the Portland Art Museum's plan for the Rothko addition that creates a psychological and physical barrier. It reduces access for pass-through hours to the Madison Plaza pathway. I'm here to represent many elderly in my downtown neighborhood. It is the goal of all aging individuals to age in place. Aging in place means to be able to continue to live in one's home and neighborhood. To enable us to stay in our homes and neighborhoods, accommodations must be made. This plan creates the largest superblock in Portland and could set a precedent for more superblocks downtown, making walking downtown a greater challenge for me and many elderly. We need this shortcut to be able to help us maneuver around downtown during the day and night. I must add, this plan was done without any input from the community or any consideration of the needs of the elderly neighbors or people with disabilities. Growing older is a privilege, but it brings with it challenges, and the most difficult challenge is the diminishing mobility issues. I love the Art Museum. I support the Art Museum, and I love what they do. And hearing all of their wonderful programs today made me love them even more, but I do not love what they're doing to our city. I urge the commission to support the needs of the elderly and oppose any changes to the existing ordinances for the Madison Plaza pathway.
Thank you.
Next three, please. Bruce Kaplan, Paula Lefche, Susan Bliss. They'll be followed by Katie Urie, Deanna Muller-Crispin, and Mary Luz.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Kaplan and I live at 1500 Southwest Park Avenue. I'm gonna go off my script a moment. I'm sorry, I'm gonna go off my script a moment. It seems as if most of the success stories we've heard about the museum was if this was a hearing to remove funding from the museum. I was kind of flabbergasted at the presentation. If they could be that successful the way they are, I don't know why they can't continue the way they are. They seem to prove my point. I'm against allowing a change to the existing ordinance. How much does a wall cost? Or Donald Trump comes to Portland? How can anyone consider erecting such a barrier at any time, but especially now? We do not need more evidence of a privileged few taking away simple, yet exquisite pleasures from the common citizens of Portland. The existing ordinance was created to prevent just such an occurrence that is being proposed. The museum has taken an arrogant position in an attempt to gain what they think is best for them, and they say it's best for us. It is not. The Rothko Pavilion, which may or may not be populated by a few paintings on loan, is an attempt by the museum's board of directors to take something precious away from the city without any cost to themselves. Usually in politics, there is compromise, where each party to an agreement loses something and also gains something. The museum only desires to gain. They offer nothing in return for creating a superblock. They offer nothing for making it more difficult for the average citizen to move through our downtown core. They offer nothing in return for changing a beautiful pedestrian thoroughfare into a barrier. Please vote to not change the existing ordinance and ask the museum to submit a design that does not block our passageway. Perhaps they can reevaluate their request and we can all be happy. Thank you for listening and for voting your heart and mind.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Lefche and I live in the Elliott. And I, I'm gonna go off script a little, too, after hearing what I have. No one is questioning the value of an art museum and what they contribute to the community. In any city, an art museum is a major symbol of cultural life. I am a musician and an artist, and to me, one reason that I chose to live downtown was exactly that access to the concert halls and being right across the street from the Art Museum, which is probably the most important building in the city to someone like me. Expanding the museum on the upper floors would enhance the museum without destroying a heavily-used feature of downtown Portland, a pedestrian walkway that connects the streetcar lines to entertainment venues, shops, restaurants, churches, residential buildings, Portland State University, and which provides a traffic-free respite for all residents and visitors in keeping with the meditative quality of Rothko's work. Therefore, I oppose any change to the existing ordinance, but rather urge the museum to consider an alternate design in keeping with Portland's national reputation for being a city that values quality of life above all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rashida, good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Susan Bliss and I live across from the Portland Art Museum also. Most days, I take the Madison Street Passage to walk downtown. I'm shocked that my good neighbor now wants to build a structure that will block my right-of-way whenever the museum is closed. As a member and supporter of the museum, I admire its exhibition and education programs that offer so much to an expanding public, but suddenly this welcoming mainstay of Portland's cultural scene has made a policy U-turn that plainly says unfriendly. The museum must not ignore its faithful members or its newcomers, filmgoers, shop patrons, and just plain strollers or bikers who, for reasons of convenience, safety, and/or eco-consciousness, regularly use the Madison Street Passage. The best architecture can be strikingly beautiful, offering unexpected solutions to knotty sighting problems. I think Vinci Hamp could have done the same thing, could have done that also, while fully maintaining an accessible right-of-way. But the firm's esteemed architects may not have known how much our community values its spit of Madison Street, or they would have conceived a design to keep it open. Being out-of-towners and Being out-of-towners and perhaps not fully briefed on local priorities, the firm may not have understood how many of us rely on this busy, car-free thoroughfare. Did the museum neglect to inform the firm? Or did they dismiss the sighting problem as just a minor issue that could be overcome simply by asking the city to revise a standing ordinance? That ordinance, which has been enforced since 1968, stipulates that the passage between Southwest Park and 10th, the space on which the museum wants to build, must provide a permanent eight-foot-wide route through a dedicated open mall lighted after dusk that must not be blocked between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM daily. These rules help to protect Portland's much-praised, walkable blocks and uninterrupted through streets. As construction claims ever more of our urban space, it is vital that the full ordinance remain in force. To comply, therefore, the museum must revise its proposal, though it still may bridge the walkway on upper floors. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you.
Next three, please. Katie Urie, Deanna Muller-Crispin, Mary Luz. They'll be followed by Sean Murphy, Wilfred Muller-Crispin, and Lake Paraguay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Urie. I am a member of Oregon Walks and I am a member of the Portland Art Museum. I'll speak for myself. I'm very disappointed that we've had to lecture the city commissioners on the Portland Art Museum on the costs of the Madison closure, which create, as we've heard for several hours, another super block in the city and which breaks, rather than connects, our very important pedestrian network. I'm embarrassed at the arguments provided by the Portland Art Museum. I find it, as many have said, inward-looking, arrogant, and I...
Can I just say something?
Correct.
Because there's a theme beginning to creep into the testimony, which has a judgment component about the person submitting the application, and I'm just speaking for myself.
Correct.
What is hugely helpful for me is to understand your perspective about why it falls short.
Okay.
Why you've, you can testify any way you want.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, what's hugely helpful for me is to hear the merits and to hear you address the values and what you care about. It does not help my cause to have either side characterize the other's motives.
Okay, okay.
I'm just telling you, as someone who's been asked to referee this.
Correct.
And so it's much more helpful to understand your values, how you view it, and if you have an alternative suggestion. But you are free to testify any way you want, but I just think if we start having a...
I stand corrected, I appreciate that very much. I very much believe that the city needs a connected pedestrian network. And I believe that this closure breaks that pedestrian network. And I think we've said that a number of times today, and I don't want to waste your time anymore by saying that again, but I think the pedestrian network downtown is a critical part of our transportation system downtown, and to close it off is similar to closing off Jefferson or Columbia. We need that to keep our city connected. And I'm not convinced that this structure will help me, as a patron of the art museum, find my way between one building or another or get in or out of the building in any way. I don't see the improvement in my experience in the art museum. I would like to see a totally open walkway through Madison. And I, that's my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Deanna Muller-Crispin, I live downtown. I'm a longtime member of the Portland Art Museum, probably as long as anyone else in the room, since the 1980s. The Madison Plaza has been my absolute favorite passageway in Portland ever since 1990, when I began my habit of using it several times a week. The views in each direction are unique, from the Congregational Church in the historic elm in front of the YWCA. The museum's proposed Rothko Pavilion would turn this priceless public passageway into a monolith blockage. Their proposed huge glass barrier does not say, as someone else has already said, "Welcome, pass-through on your way to wherever," rather it communicates, "This is a private space, you have to pee to come in here." It will certainly not suggest that it is a dedicated public right-of-way, and at any rate, it would be navigable only when the museum is open. I understand the museum's desire to improve connectivity between their two buildings, but this should not happen by decreasing the connectivity for many people who live in the neighborhood or come here to participate in its many cultural and social activities. And of course, and you've heard this already today, it is in contradiction to the city's planning, in the central city plan, and I'll just read one part of it. In "Walking," it says, "It shall encourage walking as the principal way to get around the central city with improved infrastructure that enhances safety and closes access gaps, rather than forming new ones, to areas within and adjacent to the central city." There are other options to Pam's plan, as you've already heard, without blocking public access to a public road, and I think the skybridge is a very good idea. And just one last comment, this is, I'm not trying to denigrate the museum at all because I love the museum, but I do believe that they have failed in the process of trying to bring their case to the public. I was distressed at the Downtown Neighborhood Association's board vote in executive session when association members were excluded to support Pam's proposal. At that meeting, I was in fact very impressed by the nearly unanimous opposition of the attending residents of the neighborhood to Pam's proposal. Pam presented the Rothko Pavilion design as a done deal without ever previously having tried to discuss this with downtown residents or even asked for their opinion. My opinion is clear. I oppose both closing the Madison Plaza passageway and changing the existing street-vacation ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mary Luz, I'm doing my own clock. I thank the art museum for its programming such as the $5 art entrance with Oregon Trail because it brings more people in and there's another, maybe less-known activity that's done where there's a monthly meeting of a docent teaching a group of blind people, blind or visually impaired people about the things in the museum and particular exhibits, and that's also done at a lower admission. And these two things, in addition to positive things that have been said, keep the art museum at having a good reputation. And so I respectfully suggest that, I wanted to be positive, but don't ruin your reputation by putting this walkability barrier into your good space. I better stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have 11 left remaining to speak. Next three, Sean Murphy, Wilfred Muller-Crispin, Lake Paraguay, if I have that pronounced correctly. They'll be followed by Tim Davis, Ruth Ann Barrett, and Ellen Van der Slice.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Wilfred Muller-Crispin, I'm a...
I'm sorry, could you pull the mic just a little closer?
Sure.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I'm a near-resident to the Portland Art Museum. I made Portland my home about 40 years ago, so excuse my ability to speak in a very eloquent way, we had some of the previous people present their situation. Limiting use of the passage will make residents less safe, is my opinion, especially at night by making them detour through poorly lighted, less-used streets, other than by transients who tend not to use the Madison pass as much. Pam's proposed provides convenience only for the good of Pam, but not for its residents. Downtown residents have felt helpless when confronted, and I'm sorry about Councilmember Fisher, not to bring this up, but have felt helpless when confronted by Pam's proposed pavilion project. I feel like a Don Quixote, fighting the mighty windmills that is Pam, its wealthy, influential, powerful sponsors and lawyers. Pam has emailed their thousand members, using them to support the development, and has just been marketing materials outside the Belushi Building that showed the pavilion as nearly approved, as an approved concept. Pam's immediate neighbors were present by the marketing and development arm, as a matter of fact, the professional presentation. The neighbors were told, "We are not interested, nor do we need residents' input, since our committee and architectural contracts have already considered all the options and will not consider any changes to the proposed plans." This is word for word, as was stated. Also a question, maybe for your esteemed attorney. Is Pam going to purchase the right to restrict the public from its existing right to use this publicly-owned corridor? What is it worth for the passageway to be vacated and increase revenue for Pam? Portland taxpayers should know the monetary value of the land they would be basically donating to Pam, since the public would essentially have no further right of use. It's a prime real estate, as we all know, one might add. We've been members of the Portland Art Museum for basically a lifetime, 35 years plus. We visit museums all over the world, including Portland, and I think Portland can do better. I oppose the pavilion as it's designed right now, and it should be modified to maintain the passage.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Sean Murphy, I'm a new resident of Portland. I live in the museum area and the first thing I did was I joined the art museum when I moved to Portland, along with the Film Association. And I'm actually, you know, moving to the museum area as it is was one of the reasons I chose to locate downtown, rather than say in the Pearl or other outlying areas. I think it's, I also have a background in architectural design, and that it's really common for architects to solve the floor plan problem, right, where it's simply the footprint of the building bounded by the streets, and they solve the problem and solve it well within those boundaries. I'd say that the, what's been expressed here is that those, that axial experience that the museum stated was part of their original vision and part of the logic and accessibility that made the museum, the original museum design great. Today's access is really the streets, you know, that axial experience is what the connectivity is between the museum and the surrounding community. So in my view, you know, creating a super block, of course, is the most negative way to put it, but in fact, it creates a barrier. The through access there is 24 hours a day. So having it accessible during business hours is not simply a practical solution, is contrary to the goal, what should be the goal of the museum. Having moved here from San Francisco, where I also saw really major museum changes that were really well-done, right? But Portland is really unique in that sort of accessibility and walkability, that those cultural institutions truly are part of this downtown area in a way that you won't see in other cities around the world. And I think that frankly, the city of Portland got it right the first time.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, it's nice to see you. My name is Lake Paraguay, I'm a civil rights lawyer in Portland, and I've been a member of the PDX, or Portland Art Museum, for almost 20 years and have served or participated with the Contemporary Arts Council several years during that time. I appeared today before the council, unfortunately, to oppose the granting of public property to the Portland Museum for the use the museum seeks. The current proposition is a wall and a travel ban in one. According to the Portland Art Museum website today, and it was labeled as October 6, which is six months ago, it states that groundbreaking is scheduled to take place in 2018 with an expected completion date for the project in late 2020 or early 2021. At this point, they don't have the rights to build anything, even a causeway above that. As many of you know, I'm sure, the rights, property rights are a bundle of sticks, and right now, the stick that the Portland Art Museum has is a right to have a public sculpture garden. That was the value that was seen as being beneficial to the city when it gave over public rights to the museum in 1968, nearly 50 years ago. The proposed ordinance will grant to a nonprofit organization, not a public entity, a significant and very expensive opportunity in land and air rights that belong collectively now to the entire city. This is not just an access issue, this is a building issue, it is a much bigger ordinance, and it's not a done deal. We have not given over the rights to build on a public sculpture garden. That was never part of the 1968 ordinance. So the council's considering today whether to give away all of the public air rights, all of the free speech rights that exist in a public forum, which would not exist, these free speech rights, the same free speech rights would not exist in a building where commerce is taking place, where priceless artwork exists. So we're selling off the free speech rights that we enjoy in a public forum. And all of the unfettered access the sculpture garden currently offers between the streets to the park, all of the fresh air rights, the right to be in that space without shoes, the right to be in that space with your dog, the right to be in that space easily with your wheelchair, the right to sun with your shirt off, the right to rest and ponder, and the right to sit for an entire day collectively in the rain. I wonder what that place is going to look like when it's really, really rainy and they say, yes, come in, come in, come in. It's going to be full of people wanting to sit in there all day long to get out of the rain, and I'm sure that the public space aspect of that place is not, is not going to last in that regard, the way it is now. So if this plan is approved, our public space that we have now will certainly have some paintings and sculptures, but it will be used primarily for the main entrance to the museum, as I understand it, where people pay $20 per head and $17 per student or senior. A museum offering the public, the museum right now offers the public three free hours per month. The public already benefits from an outdoor sculpture garden, something that I don't think exists anywhere else in the city, and something that creates public access to the arts already. A monolithic glass structure sure to be covered with opaque flyers advertising shows will not be a truly public space. It will not invite citizens into the building. Just yesterday, the New York Times published an article on POPs, privately-owned public spaces, where the city gives over or allows some variance from existing law to create a public structure, and of course, there's one in Trump Tower, and they ignored the obligations there, and it took all of this effort for...
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up.
Just wrap up your thoughts, you don't have to stop, just wrap up.
Oh, I'll wrap it up.
Great, thanks.
So I invite the council to consider the many rights and the, what we own as a collective right now that we're giving away, to consider all of those that haven't been brought up, especially the expressive rights, the free speech rights that would go away if we gave all of this away, not even for a dollar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have you sent that in by email?
Have I sent in my comments by email yet? No, I'm doing that today.
If you could, that would be very helpful, as was mentioned, we're not going to be voting on this today, I'd really like to hear your testimony.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, it's, I'm the one who's required to try and keep the things moving, so I do apologize, but you can always submit testimony via writing. We do get it, we do read it, and some people prefer not to come and talk in public. We'll read your testimony as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three, please. Tim Davis, Ruth Ann Barrett, Ellen Van der Slice. They'll be followed by Elliot Akwe Scott, William Sweeney, and Ashley Robinson.
Good afternoon. Wait for everyone to...
There you are.
Hey, you guys. Sorry, City Council, this is Tim Davis, and good to see you all. And I live in the Harrison East, you know, one of those tall, ugly concrete buildings, and I just love it. and I just love it. And for many years, I was a, I was a primary webmaster for the U.S. EPA, but now I run a blog called Places for Everyone. It's placesforeveryone.com. And I study great places all over the world, and if this doesn't convince you, I don't know what will. In one day, I drove to Bend and back just to check, to check out an alley, solely to check out an alley. And Chloe's like, "It's cool." And, um, and I will actually be posting a long post on my blog about a proposal for Southwest Ankeny that will completely blow your mind. A wonderful car-free passageway that we desperately need. So, regarding this proposal, first of all, I totally agree that Pam desperately needs to be expanded and massively improved, but a fairly standard-issue glass wall that literally walls off one of the greatest pedestrian passages, thoroughfares in the U.S. is definitely not the way to do it. Pam's goal is to create, as they say, you know, I'm quoting, "Create one of Portland's grand public spaces," but we already have one of the nation's most enjoyable, fully urban, two-block-long, heart-of-the-cultural district public spaces. And believe me, I've checked, that's what I do. So, connectivity and activated art-filled, beautiful, inspiring, car-free corridors that allow bikes, please allow at least people to walk their bikes, if nothing else, are what great cities are about. Madison Plaza and Union Way are literally the only two good examples we have in the heart of downtown. I'm not talking about the Pearl, those beautiful examples in the Pearl, just in downtown. And this street vacation would set a horrible precedent, as we've seen with Big Pink. Someone said, "That's public?" That's wrong. That was an experiment for 20 years. Seven years ago, that became privatized, and that is what happens. So, again, there are only two places downtown that I show every visitor, and that's Madison Plaza and Union Way. Think about that. So, they may say that, you know, public will have access during museum hours, but once a space is semi-privatized, it becomes increasingly privatized over time. This happens 100% of the time. So, 30 years from now, play this tape. Hello, 2047, I'm looking at you. Thank you, I rest my case. So, and also, this is like going back to 1950s car-centric planning rather than people-centric planning. It destroys what little urban vibrancy we have left in the cultural district. It also blocks one of the most iconic views that, of the South Park blocks, including where the largest elm trees on 10th and the most photographed church in the entire city. So, I think we should raise this all up the one floor, as they've done in Madison, in Amsterdam, in Washington, D.C., another example. So, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Got to read your blog. What is it?
Yes, yeah, my blog, yes. It is unlike any other placemaking blog on earth, trust me. It's called placesforeveryone.com. The dot org was taken, so I had to do the dot com.
I think most people go to com anyway.
Whether it's four or the number four.
So, Mr. Davis, where is Union Way?
Oh, Union Way is the gorgeous Parisian-style arcade that connects the Ace Hotel to Powell's.
Oh, okay.
So, Union Way, right by the...
Yeah, I know what you mean. Thank you very much. That is lovely.
It is just gorgeous. And again, that, those are my two favorite.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ann Barrett. I have a site and a YouTube channel and Twitter called pdxdowntowner.com. I think Chloe over there has heard of me. And I'm here because, for one and two points. The first point is that the process involved for making an addition to the Portland Museum is kind of, well, how shall I say it? You know, the landed gentry sort of feeling to it. I don't want to, you know, but it's not really drawing from the people, the residents who live there. And I don't even think it's drawing from some of the institutions that surround it. For example, I do go to the Congregational Church, and, you know, that institution is rented out quite frequently, I might add, and in the evenings. And if you come out of that church in the evenings, you really scurry across that plaza because it's your way to the bus, to the trolley, and to parking, interestingly enough. So, I just don't think there's been enough input. And then in my written remarks, I referenced, and I know I'm not supposed to do this very often, but I referenced Cleveland and the Cleveland Museum of Art in particular. And yes, I did grow up there, but I haven't been there since I was 18 years old, except to visit once. And when I visited that once quite recently, they had a beautiful atrium, glass atrium, and they, like this museum, had the issue of a newer building with an older, an older building. They're 100 years old, built with timber and oil money, that, you know, it was fabulous to be in that, that space. And it was big enough that if the city wanted to host a big party, for example, for some reason, like hundreds of people can be in it. But, you know, really, and I know Portlanders love to talk about height limits and buildings and walkways and greenways, but, you know, fundamentally, the thing that makes Cleveland Museum, I think, a great museum, a world-class museum, is that it's free. So, I know there'll be people out here having heart attacks, but you know what? I think the museum ought to be free, and I think that anyone should be able to walk between the two buildings with, being in a wheelchair, on a bike, or two legs, one leg, I don't care, but that needs to be kept. And to call it the commons, I think, is a bit on the exaggeration side. It's not the commons. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just make a comment? I can't resist, because one of my mentors is Ernie Bonner, who was on the Planning Commission.
Wait a minute.
Ernie Bonner was on the Planning Commission when I was, and he was the Planning Director here when Pioneer Courthouse Square was done. He was also the Planning Director in Cleveland, and he said that they had a joint agreement that they would always make choices in ways that gave more options to people with fewer options. And I think what you just said, it kind of exemplifies that, and that's one of the things that I try to remember as I'm making decisions up here.
I'm just wondering if we, do we have a longstanding feud with Cleveland that no one's told me about?
I'm sorry, wait, you know, I don't hear well. I took it out because I didn't think I'd need it.
It's okay.
Before we get into that, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Ellen Van Der Slies, and I speak to you today as a longtime advocate for people walking. And as some of you know, I retired from the City of Portland's Bureau of Transportation, where years ago, I was the project manager for the city's pedestrian plan. So, along with Doug Clotz, one of the co-founders of Oregon Walks and also a founder of America Walks, I'm here to oppose building a structure in the, on the Madison Plaza, even if people walking are allowed to pass through it during business hours by a public easement. One thing that has been mentioned today is, we've mentioned the connection to the park blocks, but the park blocks are in the 25, 2035 Comprehensive Plan are identified as an enhanced greenway corridor, so that connection is even more important. And, and the connection matters in the network that's available to people who are walking in the city core. It serves a function in the network, and it also, as you've heard over and over today through good design, enhances the experience and delight of walking in our city. I wanted to read you just one sentence from Policy 3.36, the central city pedestrian system, from the new plan. Maintain and expand the central city's highly interconnected pedestrian system. Maintain and expand. So, while, like many people, I'm a member of the Portland Art Museum, and I appreciate their objectives, and I want them to be a better museum, but I'm here today to say to you that a pedestrian way that goes through a building that is closed during non-business hours is not equal to an open pedestrian way in feeling or in function. And the proposed amendment would diminish the pedestrian system rather than maintaining or expanding it. So, the importance of connectivity in the network cannot be overstated, and I believe that the Portland Art Museum can do better for the people of Portland, and I respectfully ask you to vote no on the amendment as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have four more speakers. Elliot Akwe Scott, Ashley Robinson, Dan Borgsvik, and then they'll be followed by Barbara Ryberg.
Looks like Barbara, if you're here, looks like you can come up.
Barbara or Ashley.
Could you read the last names again?
With Elliot, Ashley Robinson, Dan, and Barbara Ryberg.
All right, looks like we're down to the last two. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Elliot Akwe Scott. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Saltzman, and members of council, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony today. And thank you, Commissioner Saltzman, for attending our Joint Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting and for inviting us to provide our comments on this proposal. The Joint, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committees have written a joint letter in opposition to the proposed amendment to this ordinance. We have three main concerns about the proposed amendment. The first, as you've heard already, it runs counter to many city policies, especially surrounding transportation and specifically for bicycle and pedestrian access in the central city. It reduces the utility of the existing transportation network in downtown for bicycles and pedestrians, and I would add for transit as well. And I think this process, if it were to succeed for the art museum's proposal, would set a poor precedent for the way that we go about conducting process for pieces of, for public resources such as an easement or for pieces of the public right-of-way. When council wrote the easement into the ordinance in 1968, vacated Madison Street, they had the right idea to propose pedestrian, to preserve pedestrian access through that vacated right-of-way. I don't think they could have envisioned downtown the way it exists now 50 years ago with so many units of adjacent housing and just the diversity of land uses that we currently have downtown. So, thankfully, they did have that vision, and they preserved that access in, with the easement. When the council amended the easement in 1984 to restrict those hours, to give that option of restricting hours, it was out of a safety concern that hasn't been revisited in 33 years, and it frankly hasn't been used very often since then, to my knowledge. As a representative of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, I'd like to say that this is an essential connection to the Hawthorne Bridge, which is one of the busiest bike corridors in North America. We've heard already from a lot of people speaking about pedestrian concerns today, but connectivity is one of the greatest assets that downtown Portland has for increasing bicycle mode share and achieving the city's transportation goals. I think a precedent for restricting connectivity is just the opposite direction that we want to go to, and so I would ask you to please keep the existing easement or to amend it to increase the hours that we have access. Eight feet is really quite, quite small. It's probably something that you would write in 1968, and it's not sufficient. I would be here providing testimony if the museum were to propose restricting it to that minimum of eight feet that's currently written. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, Commissioner Fish.
So, thank you for being here and offering your testimony, and I just have a couple of questions. So, now that I, I live in Goose Hollow, I ride my bike a lot more downtown, and where I live, Salmon is, is the preferred route to get, for me, to get down to NATO or Tom McCall and then, and then, you know, head, head south. I guess the first question is, who is currently using this right-of-way for bicycle transportation? Who, who use it? Because I, okay, so I, I've actually spent a lot of time in that area, and I've actually never seen a bike traverse this. So, and it's not, it's not, it's not what I would use for a transportation option because of the alternatives. So, who's using that for bike transportation?
So, I, I think, so I can tell you, I personally use it as a student at Lincoln High School as a teenager, and as a college student at Portland State University. I don't currently use it on my commute downtown because I don't go that far downtown, but it is used. And I, I would turn that around and I would say, imagine how much more highly-used this corridor would be if we didn't have I-405 blocking the way to the rest of downtown and points further west. You know, every block is precious, and, you know, there, as Doug Clotz pointed out earlier, there are about 600 units of housing just to the west of this, of this block. And that's, you know, if you estimate maybe for downtown mode share, 15% of bikes, if we had 600 commuters there, that might be, do the math real quick, like 90 bike commuters who might have the option of using that quarter if they wanted to hop on their bikes, and we have great bike parking code downtown for all those new buildings that are going up.
So, my second question has to do with just making sure I understand what the current law is. So, we restrict bikes downtown, like you're not allowed to have a bike on, on some of our sidewalks, for example. Is, is, is it clear under the law that bikes are allowed in this right-of-way?
I would definitely want to follow up with PBOT staff about that question.
I'm asking innocently. I don't, I, I ask the question to get an answer. I don't know.
I hope so. I've been writing there. It's not...
The statute of limitations is run, but, no, but I would like, I would like, since we're not voting today, it's a first reading, and since Commissioner Saltzman has said there's going to be follow-up consultations, discussions about this, I would like to know from PBOT, what are the existing restrictions, if any, on what you can do on this right-of-way, including, you know, any, any mode share?
I would add one thing if I could. I think the mention of a skybridge. I would also like to wonder whether it's technically a skybridge if the right-of-way has been vacated, if it's still right-of-way where the policy would propose limiting a skybridge, or if it's vacated and now in private ownership even with an easement, if the easement's sufficient, and we could fully endorse a skybridge going over the space.
I can tell you one thing. I think we could all agree that if Charlie Hales was sitting in this chair today, he'd have a very strong view of skybridges, because he was, he, all of us have things we love and we hate, and he, I think it's, he had a very strong feeling about skybridges that was not chaired by all of his colleagues, but, but that was one of his...
I think what he'd hate most is sitting in my lap. Commissioner Fritz, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment on that. I am one of those who actually does appreciate skybridges. I think there's several places where they would be. So, I remember that we actually got the language into the Comprehensive Plan that doesn't prohibit them, but rather talks to the values that they may or may not serve. So, thank you. I appreciate your analysis. That's an interesting suggestion.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Last but not least.
I hope not least. My name is Dan Borgsvik, mayor, commissioners. This is my first time speaking before you, so...
Thank you.
Nervous. I'm one of the few, I guess, speaking on behalf of the museum. I'm a longtime museum member. I am the president of the Graphic Arts Council at the museum, and the way the museum is constructed right now is a hodgepodge of, I think they said, four different iterations since the original Belushi Building, and it doesn't work very well, both in terms of showing the collections off and certainly for access by, by anyone who has any kind of disability, disability at all. I am of an age now where I have a husband who is starting to have some mobility issues, and the museum can be a challenge. You come in on one level. If you want to get to the Mark Building, you either have to walk down a very steep stairway or take a very slow elevator. Then you walk down a long hallway, take another longer stairway, or an even slower elevator to get up to visit any portion of the museum. It's, it's a challenge, and he's pretty mobile still. I would imagine anyone with any kind of serious restriction, the, the Mark Building would be impossible to negotiate as the place stands. I appreciate people's concerns about vacating the easement. I mean, it is a wonderful space, there's no doubt. I use it, but the museum doesn't have many options in this case. A skybridge, I don't like skybridges either. I would agree with Mayor Hale on that one, but you still have the same problem then for anyone with mobility issues. You come in on one level, you got to either take a stairway or a slow elevator, then you go across, it's, it, it, currently, you go through a tunnel, skybridge proposal, you'd go up and over... you'd go up and over a skybridge, it's the same problem. I can't see where that would be an improvement and worth all the money that it would, that it would take. And to answer your question, I'm around the museum a lot, daytime, nighttime. I don't see anyone using the easement for bicycles. It's pedestrians and the occasional homeless person. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your testimony. So are there any further questions or discussions for the council?
Mayor, I guess I-
Commissioner Saltzman?
Yeah, I would just like to suggest, I guess I learned from our attorneys that technically, in order to avoid voting on this next week, which I don't think anybody of us are ready to do yet, I would ask that this be referred back to my office. We will have opportunities as individuals and to talk with the Bureau of Transportation, to talk amongst ourselves, talk with other interested parties, and, and see where we all are. But I think it's been a great hearing. I appreciate everybody coming out and expressing their views, and this will be continued.
Commissioner, a question? Dan, what's your preference? I'm going to, as I go back through my notes, I will have some questions. Should we direct them to a staff person in your office, to someone at PBOT, or what's your-
Yeah, direct them to my office, to Matt, Matt Grum.
Will do.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else for the good order here? Commissioner Fritz?
I believe the Planning and Sustainability Commission is holding their hearing for the 25th, and that would go ahead so we can get their advice. It wasn't on, let me say that again. I understand the Planning and Sustainability Commission's going to be discussing this on April 25th, and so I'm assuming that we still want their advice.
Sure. Very good. Anything else?
Just want to thank everyone, Mayor, for outstanding hearing.
You bet. Thank you, everybody, for coming in and sharing your thoughts. We appreciate it. With that, we adjourn.